I'm going to call to order this special meeting of the Silicon Valley Clean Energy Authority Board of Directors on Friday, May 19th, 2021 at 1:03 PM. This meeting is being conducted in accordance with State of California Executive Order N dash 29 dash 20 dated March 17th, 2020, in consideration of the coronavirus. All members of the Silicon Valley Clean Energy Board of Directors and staff will participate in this meeting via teleconference. Members of the public may observe this meeting electronically by accessing the meeting instructions on the agenda. Public comments can be sent in advance emailed to the board clerk at the address listed in the agenda. And will be read within the public comment period or applicable agenda item. The public will also have an opportunity to provide comments during the meeting. I will let you know when that time is and just raise your virtual hand. Public, um, let's see, speakers are customarily limited to three minutes, but this may be increased or decreased. Based on the number of speakers, et cetera, and I will let you know if there is a change. So with that, uh, let's have the roll call, please.
Thank you. Interim Chair Larson.
President.
Director Hilton.
Here.
Alternate Director Way.
Yeah.
Director Rennie.
Here.
Alternate Director Klein.
Here.
Director Chua.
Here.
Director Walia.
Yeah.
Alternate Director Meadows.
Here.
Alternate Director Mekachuk.
Present.
Alternate Director Lopez.
Here.
Thank you. It looks like that concludes our directors and alternates who are in attendance, and we do have a forum.
Okay, thank you very much. Next is public comment on matters not listed on the agenda. The public may provide comments on any topic that is not on today's agenda. But it was within the subject matter jurisdiction jurisdiction of SBC, excuse me, I'm reading too fast. If there are any members of the public who would like to make a comment, please raise your virtual hand by either clicking on the raise hand button or dialing star nine on your telephone. And I'm not seeing any hands go up, so I will close the public comment. Move on to the regular calendar, item one, SBC Eboard Workshop, Customers, Programs, and Finance and Administration. So I will hand it over to staff.
Well, maybe I'll just say, thank you all for attending our agenda today. We're going to have three presentations. We'll start with Account Services and Customer Relations, Don Bray. Then we'll follow with Amy Bailey, who'll talk about programs and we'll end with Amrit Singh talking about finance and administration. We have two hours scheduled. We've targeted about 20 minutes for each presentation. With about 15 to 20 minutes after that for questions. So we're really hoping for a lot of dialogue and questions, and then of course we'll answer today and then some things that if it requires for the follow up with you one on one or as a group, we will do that. So with that, I will hand it over to our first speaker, Don Bray.
All right. Thanks, Garish, and good afternoon, everyone. Andrew, if we can fire up the account services slides here. And I think we can, we can progress right to the, the start of the team picture. So, yeah, we'll begin with just a quick introduction of, of who the account services and community relations team is. We have nine, nine members currently. Unfortunately, John Sup, who's pictured second here, we don't have for a whole lot longer. We're actively recruiting for his replacement. He's moving back to the, the East Coast. But the rest of the team has, has been in place for some time now. There's actually two slides here. This slide shows principally the account services team. And if we can go to the next slide. This is the communication side of the house led by Pam Leonard. Next slide. So that the functions that account services support are, are many and and really center around interaction with our customers. So our team manages customer operations and billing, program deployment, communications very broadly. We manage customer rates. A lot of our interaction with customers, so customer service on the backend, we got a lot of calls. We have a call center that we manage and so forth. And then, of course, we, we manage our, our website and digital presence. And we drive a lot of our community outreach and engagement functions. Some of you may have been to, for instance, our Bike to the Future event or other events like that that we operate. And that's, that's all done through this team. So a broad variety of functions and you can really see it, an interaction here between communications and, and customer related activities. Next slide. So we'll talk through who our customers are exactly, and that's kind of an interesting conversation. We will talk about what our value proposition is. We will talk about what you need to know concerning SBCs rates and billing. And then we'll talk about some current topics that are especially important and that will probably be covering in in upcoming board meetings, so we can give you some background on, on some of these very current items. Next slide. So this is an important landscape slide for everybody to, to take in. And I'd like to, to talk about rules of thumb and a, a good rule of thumb is to, to think about our, our load, the electricity we provide falling into pretty close to three equal thirds. One third of our load is residential. One third is small and medium business and one third is large commercial and industrial. And in terms of the volume of the number of customers, we have the volume of customers. Obviously, that's going to be very weighted in the direction of residential. So about 90% of our accounts are residential. But they're small, so they only add up to about a third of our load. And then you can see the numbers for small and medium and large commercial. At the end of the day, we have probably 25 or so large commercial accounts that represent maybe 20% of our business. So there really is a, a big Pareto effect going on here. And we deal with those large commercial and industrial customers directly. We know the, the energy buyers there by name. And we, we report out directly to them. And we, we, we really try to give them the, you know, the patented white glove treatment. Because they do represent a significant, every one of them represents a significant share of our load. When we deal with the small and medium business customers and with residential customers, we tend to operate more through volume channels like email communications and indirect mail and so forth versus direct interaction, although any of these customers can call in and engage with us directly and through our call center. The bottom row here is important to talk about as well. So there are customers that we don't serve. And that are served by independent energy services companies called ESPs. The direct access market is about, currently about 16 or 17% of the California market and it's capped at that level. And large commercial and industrial customers can apply to become direct access customers in a sense to buy directly from the market and not have to go through PG&E or a service provider like SBC. This market tends to be extremely competitive. And we do have a, a number of very, very large customers in our service territory that basically for the last 20 years have operated through this direct access channel. So they are not eligible to be automatically enrolled in SBC service. We would essentially have to go out and negotiate with those customers to provide energy at a better price than they're probably getting in this very competitive DA market. I would, I'd like to name some names here, but I won't because we need to be very, very confidential in talking about who these customers are. But certainly in private conversation, we can, we can talk about that to give you some sense. So the one-third, one-third, one-third model also happens to apply for direct access. There's about another one-third equivalent of our load in our market that's currently being served by independent energy service providers. So I'll stop there just for a second, in, in case there are questions on this, but this is an important bit of background.
Okay, yeah, I see. One hand, Director Mekachuk.
Hi, um, this is a very interesting slide. And I'm wondering if you had a column that said PG&E customers on here. Maybe to the right of, you know, like, how many customers do, are out there that SBC could possibly get?
A great question. It's actually coming up on a future slide, but our participation rate, as we term it, is right around 96%. And, and it's very consistent across these different customer classes. So our, our opt-out rate, if you want to say it the other way, is about 4%. And, and we see a very similar rate there between residential and, and commercial customers. So, so you could gross these numbers up by another 4%, and that would be the overall number of accounts that, that we could theoretically serve.
So basically, PG&E would really like to have this business.
I think that's a fair statement. Yes.
Okay. Looks like Director Way is next.
Yes, so this direct access is included in the, the chart. I mean, I'm a little confused. A one-third, one-third, one-third.
So, so, yeah, thank you. That it, it is important to understand this and it is kind of confusing, but we, we cannot serve direct access customers. So hence, they're shown here below the line. They've, most direct access customers have worked for many years now with independent third-party service providers. And the process that we went through to enroll customers. Those customers that we could enroll exclusively came from PG&E. They did not come from these independent third-party service providers. So it's just to indicate that there is this additional set of customers in our service territory that are being served by this separate channel. So is that clear?
Yes, so the goal is to be competitive and not lose more customers to direct access.
Correct. And, and today, the, in a, in a sense, the quota for direct access is capped. So there really aren't many possibilities for our customers to leave for direct access, although we will talk about this a little later on in, in the material. Because there's a, a good likelihood that the direct access cap that I referred to is going to be raised. So the market is going to be opened up a little bit and we will be in a position of having to compete for retaining customers.
Thank you.
Thanks. And I, I had a question on direct access as well. The cap, is that a cap on the number of customers? Or is it like cap on the megawatt hours that they're served? And the reason I'm asking is I could imagine like a large corporation as it grows, it gets more facilities. They're a direct access customer and they get bigger and bigger and bigger if, but they might just count as one customer. Yeah.
Yeah, it, it is a megawatt hour cap. But, but to your point that, that does happen. And, and so the cap has to be managed and as certain people drop out of, of direct access over time that, that room under the cap may be absorbed by other companies that are growing, very much like you say.
Okay. Okay, good. Thank you. Let's move on.
Okay, so I have a couple of charts here that just show how our load is served across the different jurisdictions of SBC. So Sunnyvale has the largest load and this is non-residential that's showing in this, this graph here on the left. So you can see Sunnyvale, Milpitas, the county, Mountain View have large commercial electric loads. So no big surprise there. Then there's a, a number of cities that are very much in the mid-tier and then off to the right, cities that are primarily residential. Okay, next slide. So this looks at residential load and again Sunnyvale being the largest city has the, the largest overall residential load. And it's also interesting to look at average load by customer. And so you can see that, that this varies actually quite a bit across our different jurisdictions with Los Altos Hills and Monte Sereno being, being the highest in terms of average consumption per residential customer. And the others sort of being at, at various levels. Unless there are questions, we can just keep, keep rolling here.
Yes, there is a question. Director Klein.
Thank you. On, on this specific item, have we seen a trend? You know, do we have trending numbers? So these are, this is totals for SBC, PG&E, direct access, I'm assuming, just looking at the footnote for data sources. Is there, is there a trend? Has it been trending from a year-to-year standpoint? Do we have that data?
We do. We have, we have that detail from basically, I think it's 2014 or 2015 on to, to present. And, you know, we could certainly share how that is evolved by community. But overall, what we're seeing is a slight reduction, year-to-year, very slight, maybe half a percent in, in overall load. And what is likely driving that is a couple of things. One is solar being added locally. So think residential solar, which we have a very significant volume of, and then energy efficiency. So the move to LED lighting and that sort of thing. So those are, those are taking away, but we also have electric vehicles coming on and, and other new uses. So it is really interesting to see how this nets out over time and, and currently it's sort of been a battle to a draw, kind of, maybe with a, a very, very slight trending down. Now, that could start to, to move up and Amy, Amy and her comments will have more, a more educated perspective on that, but that, that's what we've seen, seen to date.
Thank you.
Thank you. And I'm not seeing any more hands. So let's move, move on to the next slide.
So this was an interesting exercise we went through a, a couple of years ago. And we wanted to really recognize the fact that when we talk about our residential customers, it's a wide range of, of customers and needs that we're dealing with. And, and, you know, you can, you can kind of easily think of residential customers just being that. Well, we have, again, a broad range of circumstances that people are in. And as we engage residential customers, we need to be thoughtful about, you know, where they are and their thinking and what their needs are. And this is how we roughly broke out our residential customers with customers that are very into energy and, and knowledgeable on what a kilowatt hour is. And the kinds of customers that pay a lot of attention to their bill falling into this energy wonk category. Think solar customers or people with EVs or people that are starting to make the move into home electrification and so forth. And this is about the percentage that we, we see out there. Sustainably rooted are people that principally live in single-family homes and that really want to do the next thing. They want to go green. They, they shop at the farmer's market. They're maybe just not sure what to do next or are looking to learn more before they, they make their move. Busy suburban, also single-family dweller, a single-family home dweller. But really spending most of their time thinking about getting the kids to soccer practice or whatever it might be. They would like to do the right thing, but they also, it's just not super high on their priority list. Green on the go would be people living in, you know, condos or multifamily settings. Again, very interested in, in moving to, you know, a greener lifestyle. The making ends meet, also multifamily and a very dynamic group. You know, we have a lot of people that move in and out of here in the average year, you know, students or tech workers that are in the area for a short period of time that are a hard group to address just because, again, they're, they're not going to be thinking about, gee, I should make an investment in the heat pump, water heater when I'm only going to be here for a year and I'm renting. And then this, this final category, we do deal, of course, with, with people in the community that really just don't want to hear about the green message. Or, yeah, have, have, have other priorities. And so in a lot of the direct outreach that we've done, the tabling that we've done, just you, you tend to see people in these, these kind of broad categories. This is super qualitative and you can see we're talking about very round numbers here. But it is instructive just as we think about the communications that we do and the offers that we make. You know, are we addressing customers across this broad range of, of needs? Next slide.
Oh, and it looks like Director Way has a question.
Yes, this is very interesting data. How do you? How do you get the data?
So when we put this together, we did, we did customer surveys. In fact, we, we ran a little bit of a contest and we sent out emails to, I think it was 15,000 customers saying, you know, fill out this survey and we'll enter you into drawing to win a hundred dollars off your electricity bill. And we got a lot of responses and, and, and the survey questions were pretty broad. So it helped inform this. We also used customer demographics, just, you know, how many of our customers live in single-family versus multifamily. You know, what sort of turnover rates do we have in, in certain groups of customers and the like? But again, it's, it's kind of a qualitative exercise. So I yeah, but, but useful and just illustrating the, the different types of customer needs.
No more questions on this. So let's move forward.
Okay. So many of you may have seen the presentation that we made back in, I think it was December, that board meeting. But we did get more scientific more recently and we, we did a survey of 600 customers. And we based the survey or we made sure to get an equal number of responses from customers in different census tract quartiles. So we wanted to get an income levelized view of needs in the community. And then we looked at those results, analyzed the results by SEVI quartile. And again, there, we did a, an entire presentation on this. I, I more wanted to bring this up just to make any of you that weren't at that or didn't see that material and we'd be happy to share that offline. There were some interesting results in it. And just in terms of, of how the different quartiles are looking at their energy bill and thinking about improvements that they want to make in their, in their energy infrastructure, be it buying an electric vehicle or focusing on more energy efficiency in their home or whatnot. We did see distinctions by, by income quartile.
I'm sorry, can I ask what SEVI, what does SEVI represent?
So that is Socioeconomic Vulnerability Index is what SEVI means. And there are, there are a few different measures that go into that. Education, educational attainment being one. There's basically an income metric, but it's based on housing burden, you know, what percentage of your income would have to, to go into paying your rent or your mortgage. So there are a few different measures like that that go into this SEVI score. And then every census tract is scored based on that set of criteria. And they just fall into quartiles, SEVI one being the classically wealthiest areas and SEVI four, the least wealthy. Any other questions? I should keep moving.
Oh, yeah, let's keep moving.
Okay. So in terms of SBCs over, overall value proposition, again, I think many of you are familiar with this, but if, if you have to have those three bullets, you know, we're fighting climate change by, by providing clean electricity. And, and we're building new energy projects in that process. And secondly, we're working to accelerate electrification to further reduce emissions, you know, basically fuel switch in the transportation and built environment sectors. And then thirdly, we're reinvesting locally. We have saved customers a lot of money and I'll give you some numbers here in a minute on their energy bills. And then we're also reinvesting in local programs. And, and other efforts like scholarship grants to, to local students. And, and local community-based organizations and so forth. In terms of the top-line impacts, again, if you want those three bullets, we have helped reduce overall CO2 emissions across our 13 communities by 24% from a baseline that we did in, in the year 2015. And a lot of this reduction has come from the switch to cleaner electricity. Some of it has come from continued improvement in energy efficiency and vehicles, move to electric vehicles and so forth. And we have this all broken out. But if we want to look at an overall impact number, this is a really important one and we continue to, to track this. We have goals into the future for this. The second point is we've invested over a billion dollars now in new renewable energy facilities. And one of the, one of the wraps, of course, on CCAs or other organizations like this is, oh, you know, we're just, you know, it's a shell game. We're, we're buying electricity that would have just been provided to you by someone else. Well, that was the case on day one, but of course, as we've as, as we've grown as an organization and, and our revenue has grown and so forth, we are able to, to really start to make the investments in new production that we were always envisioned. And that's added up to quite a bit now. And then thirdly, we've saved customers now a total since inception of $69 million in, in on bill savings. So some pretty big numbers. This is, we're not going to drain this slide, but you should all know that we have for each community every year, a summary that we do like this that is available online. We can get you hard copies, whatever you need. But we, we try to really distill each year for each community, what their involvement with, with SBC has, has netted them. So very specific numbers on the, the households that are taking service from households and businesses that are taking service from SBC, what that's meant savings-wise to your particular community and, and so forth. So if you haven't seen this for your community, take a look. Okay, now the moment you've all been waiting for, we're going to talk about rates and billing. I will move quickly through this, but there's some important concepts as we go. We want to make sure you're aware of. So you probably heard in your session a couple of weeks ago, we have two principal energy options, green start and green prime. Green start is what 98% of our customers take and it's currently priced at 1% below PG&E on the gen side. And then there's a green prime option, 100% renewable product. That's eight tenths of a cent more and it's currently about 80% wind and 20% solar. It does get you lead points. It's greenie certified. It's really very much a gold standard type of product. And some of our, our large commercial customers buy this. commercial customers buy this. A number of cities have bought this for their municipal operations and and some customers. Excellent. So many of you have probably seen your bill, SBC is featured on the front page with the the summary number, numbers there and then towards the back of the bill is a, an entire page that's dedicated to SBC charges. So our customers get these month in and month out. Customers that move into our service territory are effectively new enrollees and under the CCA rules, they need to be noticed twice, so they will get two mailings from us in their first six weeks. Stating that they have been signed up for SBC and that they have the option to opt out. And we do see a small fraction of of people opt out in that process. But each year, I would say 20% or so of our customers turn over and that's something that is really universal to to the utility business. It's a dynamic community that we serve. And as I mentioned earlier, overall, we're at about a 96% participation rate. Next slide. So you've likely seen this at at recent board meetings. But the way that our rates work is we base them off of the the PG&E generation rate that we're effectively competing against. So if you take that PG&E generation rate, if you subtract a discount amount, which currently is 1%. And then if you subtract from that, the this power charge indifference adjustment, this exit fee that we need to to pay PG&E or that our customers need to pay PG&E, what you're left with is the calculated Silicon Valley Clean Energy Generation Rate. So when the PCIA goes up, all things being equal, we need to lower our gen rate to stay under that, that that PG&E generation rate. So this is why the PCIA is such a big deal for us. It it directly affects the gen rate that that we can charge. If if we want to maintain a discount with PG&E. So comparable SBC rate again is our gen rate plus the PCIA. We currently have about eight residential rate schedules and 65 non-residential rate schedules. It's really complicated. It's a lot of numbers. And we've done two rate revisions this year, one in January and and one at the start of March. And yeah, there's the the hamster wheel is moving real fast here in in keeping these these generation rates up to date.
And we have a question from Director Walia.
Thank you. Don, can you please go back to the previous slide, the bill slide? So by the way, I do like the customer name that you have.
That's a Pam Leonard special. Yeah.
Awesome. So when we're looking here in the orange portion, they highlighted the current PG&E electric delivery charges versus the SBC. So is that the $89.08? Is that the PCIA that we have been talking about?
It would include the PCIA, but it's also transmission and distribution. Charges from PG&E and I've I've got another slider too that I think will help illustrate that. But but yes, the the PCA would be in that, in that number.
What what I was getting at was can a customer have, I know we have talked about the black box, how they calculate the PCIA. But I was just trying to decipher, can the customer see within that $89? What are they paying for? If it's a subsequent slide, I'm fine.
Yes, that the PCIA is, it is exposed in the bill. We're not going to, we're not going to see that bill page, unfortunately, but but they can see that in the.
I will look at it. Thank you so much.
Okay, excellent. Next slide, I guess. Okay, so this, this is a current view. So these are, these are current numbers. This would be for the average customer in our service territory and an average customer uses 470 kilowatt hours a month, which for many of you is not going to seem like a lot. But again, this is an average across all types of of homes and the the green start rate is currently 1% less than PG&E's rate on the generation line, but for delivery, you know, which is transmission and distribution, that number is the same for us in PG&E. So by by law, PG&E has to charge customers the same thing for transmission and distribution. Be they our customers or their customers. The PCIA enters in on that bottom line or the, well, just before the total that you see down there, the PG&E added fee. So you can see the where that comes in and to the earlier question that that would be tacked on to the PG&E electric delivery fee at that that summary line item level that we looked at. Okay. So historically, most residential customers over 80% were on or are on tiered rates. And as we've talked about in in recent meetings, the rate grows with the more electricity that you use in a month. You can see the the math on here. In June of this year, all customers that are currently on tiered rates are going to be automatically transitioned to a new time of use rate. And they'll have the option to go back to the tiered rate if they want or go to a different time of use rate. But this is something that's been coming for for many years. It's a statewide initiative. So this is happening across the the three investor-owned utilities and all associated CCAs this year and into early next year. Excellent. So this is what a time of use rate looks like. As the name implies, the rate varies depending on what time of day it is. It also changes a little bit based on the season. So during the summer, the rates are a little higher than they are during the winter, with summer being defined as the four months between June 1st and September 30th. Commercial rates, by the way, look a lot like this. They're more complicated still. They have typically, you know, another segment and the hours can be, can be more it's just more resolution in them and there's also demand charges, but they operate in principle like this with a rate that varies throughout the day and throughout the weekend. And dependent on the month of the year. Any questions on this? Okay. All right, solar customers, we have over 20,000 in our service territory. So, you know, rapidly approaching 10% of of all residential customers have solar on their roof. A lot of detail here, but the the takeaway is that we offer a very good deal to solar customers. The, especially if you over generate in a year, our cash out process is currently pretty rich, maybe something we want to change, but it's, yeah, it's very, very competitive with with PG&E's program. So if you know anyone in the neighborhood who has solar and says, well, I'm stuck with PG&E because it's a better deal, that's, that's just not true. And and we did have, you know, when we were first enrolling customers, the solar customers were among the the hardest to convince and maybe that's where the the good value proposition here came from, was to really encourage those customers to stay with us. Okay, I've got final three slides here where I just want to briefly cover some important current topics. And I think these, these subjects will all be coming up in board meetings in the near future. So next slide. So in terms of of customers that are having difficulty paying, again, this has really become a big issue with with COVID, but historically, this was something that was, you know, a relatively modest issue for SBC. We're in a pretty wealthy service territory. Only PG&E can disconnect a customer. SBC can't do that. So that's an important thing to to keep in mind and PG&E tends to be very careful about disconnecting customers. They've got a whole process they go through and series of notifications and efforts they make to not have to do that if a customer isn't paying. Under our standard policy, the policy since inception, we would send a customer a delinquency letter if they were more than 90 days in arrears. And if their balance in arrears was more than a hundred dollars and if they weren't already on a payment plan and payment plans are set up with PG&E and you know, indicate that the customer is really making an effort to 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 write the the balance. If the customer doesn't, if the status of the customer doesn't change after an additional two to three months, we would return that customer to PG&E Generation Service. So we opt them back to PG&E. So that doesn't mean they're being disconnected. But it it does mean they're no longer our customer and and they're, if if they're continuing to incur delinquent debt, then we aren't going to be that that isn't going to be on our books. It'll be with PG&E. So this is, this is important to think about because since last March, PG&E invoked a disconnection moratorium. And we halted our customer returns for non-payment. So PG&E is definitely seeing their outstanding balances grow as have we. And the PG&E moratorium is scheduled to end at the end of June. And we're going to have some decisions to make about what to do with a larger list than usual of of customers who are behind in their payments. So I'll just leave it at that for now. There'll be more coming on this, but the the background points that we thought were important here. Just in terms of what PG&E does versus what we do and and how we handle these.
We have a couple of questions here. So first is Director Mecha Check, followed by Director Wali.
I don't want to get bogged down in this, but if we SBC returns a customer to the to PG&E and then that customer becomes current with their bill, then does so SBC collect the outstanding receivable?
It does. Yes. So PG&E is essentially our our collection agent. And, you know, they they have some some means by which to do that, right? Because they they do have the power to disconnect service. So they're, you know, they're pretty good at at keeping customers paying the bills, you know, ultimately, and that money would come back to us. Eventually, though, if the customer just can't pay and they're disconnected or they leave the area or whatnot and and that money is not collectible by PG&E, we get notified of that and it becomes uncollectible debt for us. So we've tracked that over the years. It's generally been a small percentage of revenue, probably less than a quarter percent of revenue. Again, that equation has changed really over this last year.
And Director Walia has a question.
Thank you. So, Don, I was just in CalSevi's meeting from 12 noon along with a couple of the directors who are here right now. And the conversation was from the assembly members and Senator. They were talking about some legislation where where they are looking at dealing with the moratoriums regarding the rent issue with the landlord. So I'm extending that question to SBC. Are we looking at the possibility of these moratoriums being extended beyond end of June? Or is that something we will deal with once those legislations come out from Sacramento?
I I think, I think the latter, I think they'll deal with it. I mean, yeah, this is just such a large scale issue and there are a lot of people looking at this, a lot of and across different sectors, like you say, it's not just the electric bill, it's other utilities, it's rent, it and so a complex equation. And I think, well, we've been working really closely with PG&E on this. We've already put in place one program that can help to deal with this and there's another one coming. So yeah, a lot of, a lot of moving parts.
So we could be impacted. I'm looking from SBC's perspective down the road. We'll find out as time goes by.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, let's keep moving on.
Okay, so the question of direct access, we we talked about this earlier. There's a report that's going to be issued by the CPUC imminently, literally in the next few weeks on whether California should seek to expand the direct access cap. We don't really know how this is going to come down. It's and 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 there's a win question to when, when an expansion might happen. But I think it's safe to assume there could be some expansion planned at some point in the future. So we need to continue to work on on ways to to be competitive with these largest customers. We have implemented a non-standard pricing policy. This went into effect in June of 2019 through the board. The Risk Oversight Committee reviews these arrangements that we're considering and and in Greece has ultimate signing authority, but the the rock is involved in making sure that we're following our non-standard pricing policy. We have the ability to offer customers that are over 10 gigawatt hours a year, custom pricing arrangements. So that that's the top 25 or 30 customers or so. That's about what that threshold means. We have two pilot efforts that we're working on currently. So these are arrangements that we have letters of intent with customers on and that we're continuing to flesh out the details on one called an eco-investment discount. That's where we offer a CNI customer an additional discount that goes into a fund that they can then draw from to spend on local electrification improvements. And they pay half and we pay half in a sense out of this fund that we've retained through this additional discount. Green Prime Direct is working with customers to help provide electricity from specific renewables projects. So to sleeve PPAs with say a solar plus storage or a geothermal project. And this is something that that some of our largest CNI customers are interested in. So we're exploring both of these right now and if if the DA market expands, we'd imagine we might be doing more of of this type of activity. This is a big topic, but just wanted to make you aware of 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 this being in process. Next slide, last slide.
Director Way has a question.
So it's competitive is because these are direct sales from the energy providers, right? But we also buy as as you know, valley, oh, we always, I'm sorry, we always buy from them. Is it because we have to add operation cost so we cannot offer the same price rates? Is that why it's competitive?
Well, the the ESP market, the energy service provider market has probably 15 or 20 companies that play in it and they they compete for business with these direct access customers. So it's competitive in that it's not just PG&E and us competing, it's it's the 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 free market in all its glory, lot of, lot of competing energy service providers. And yes, some of those energy service providers we actually buy from, but we also buy directly now too, right through these, you know, this billion dollars and in projects that that we're developing. So we'll, we'll have some ability to be competitive if we're looking just at the supply, but it's a margin question too. A lot of these ESPs operate on razor thin margins and or will take deals at below cost to lock in a customer and and that's a difficult thing for us to do. They also, in some cases, can leverage national portfolios, yeah, long long list of relative advantages and disadvantages of ESP. long list of relative advantages and disadvantages of E S Ps and and C C As. Okay, final slide if there are no more questions. So this has also been spoken to in in recent board meetings, but one of our major pushes for this year has been to expand our digital capabilities and engage more directly with our residential customers. So we've put in place a very robust email engine. Our goal was to to do a million outbound emails to customers this year with educational content and making available new services that we have information services on our website. I think we're gonna go way past that goal. We also had a goal of 20,000 direct interactions with customers online. I think we're going to go way past that goal too. But the point is, is is how do we, as a small organization, get or get engagement with 10s, hundreds of thousands of of customers in this electrification journey. So we view digital as just a really important way to do that. So you'll continue to hear more about this throughout the year. And that was, that was it. I probably went way over my time here, but.
Well, thank you very much. There's a lot of really good information in there. We're only a little bit behind at this point. So why don't we just move on to the next presentation?
All right, this is Amy Bailey, Director of Decarbonization and Grid Innovation. I believe Andrea will be pulling up a slide deck for us to follow here. All right. Okay, um, well, good afternoon. I'll just go ahead and jump right in, especially given we're a little bit behind here, but feel free to, you know, stop me at any point. If you have any questions, I'm happy to answer those during the presentation or at the end, whatever's preferred. All right. So first, some intros. So I lead the decarbonization and grid innovation programs team. And you can see our happy faces there on the right, the decarb team, which numbers six in terms of kind of approved headcount, but four right now, as far as folks currently filling the positions. We're split up into effectively two different functional areas. One functional area, which is really what Justin and Jessman helped lead our programs, specifically the kind of strategic planning and analysis on the program and policy design. They also lead a lot of engagement with our legislative and regulatory team for bills and regulations that relate to our programs portfolio, as well as evaluation, measurement and verification. Then the other side of the team, which is currently Rebecca focuses on data. Specifically data analysis and science support for priority use cases across the organization and also support for enterprise wide systems and business process optimization. So this presentation will focus on the program side, but just so you know, there there are kind of two sides of the shop. Next slide, please. All right, I structured this presentation in terms of these five questions and tried to keep it fairly high level. Since there's a lot of information kind of coming at you. We'll obviously have a lot of opportunities to drill down into the details of the programs portfolio in the coming weeks and months and, you know, happy to do that at any point in time. But the first question, who is responsible for programs at S V C E? So we can hop forward a couple of slides, Andre. And so we often like to say that the programs team, quote unquote, is the entire organization. And the reason why sometimes we say that is because all of the S V C staff make very critical contributions about the program design and development and implementation. And so this is a little bit of an old photo. And so there are some new faces and some faces have left, but everyone across the org contributes. Next slide, please. But there are two departments that focus very heavily on programs. Don and his department, the account services and community relations team and the decarb and grid innovation programs team. Excellent. In addition to S V C E staff, we also rely very heavily on third party partners for program admin support. And so SMUD Sacramento Municipal Utility District is actually one of our primary partners. They provide general program admin support for several different programs across the portfolio. And we also have A D M Associates, which provides evaluation, measurement and verification support for the entire portfolio. And so those are two key third party partners for our programs. But as you see at the bottom there, we have over a dozen other typically competitively selected third parties that are engaged on a program by program basis. All right, next slide, please. Okay, next question. Why does S V C offer programs? So first of all, it's really right baked into our mission statement. And so to remind you, our mission statement is reduce dependence on fossil fuels by providing carbon free, affordable and reliable electricity and innovative programs for the S V C community. But why isn't it in there? And so the programs part of our operations are pretty critical for achieving our climate targets. So next slide, please. And so this is, you know, certainly a primary reason that I think programs were prioritized from the beginning by by the board, by the community. And so this is a graphic that has been included in some of the strategic plan documents. If you look at the stacked bars, this, these are annual emissions. And so there's kind of a lot happening in this graph, but the thing to look at, if you look at just 2020, there are three contributions to the stacked bar. Electricity is the teal at the very bottom. Then there's orange, which represents emissions across our community that are coming from natural gas. And the very top of the stacked bar is transportation. And so we've made tremendous progress on decarbonizing the electricity supply. Not just an S V C service territory, but across the state. And there's a lot of progress certainly yet to be made there. But the remaining largest contributions to emissions for us, it's really buildings and and vehicles and cars. And our programs portfolio really targets those other sectors. Next slide, please. And another reason why S V C offers programs is that they are very tailored to our community's needs and provide direct value. And so on the left here, I just pasted some press releases on programs that relate to programs from the past six months. That kind of captured this value that we're providing the community and the amount of reinvestment in the community. More than 25 million has been committed to date for innovative programs for our customers. Okay, next slide, please. All right, how does S V C decide which programs to offer? So on the next slide, dig into this a bit more. One kind of short answer is through extensive stakeholder engagement. We definitely have a lot of internal stakeholders internal to S V C such as our kind of customers, staff committees, you all as our board. Member agencies are listed kind of right below. We obviously are very heavily tied to our member agencies, but does then there's a very large and broad ecosystem of different types of entities that are a part of this transition to a decarbonized economy and a part of the community. And so many of them are are kind of captured here on this slide. So everything that we do in the programs portfolio really leverages pretty extensive stakeholder engagement. Next slide. And a lot of that stakeholder engagement really happens at the bottom part of this pyramid. Specifically in the development of different programs focused, what I'll call strategic plans. And those plans really form the foundation of our entire programs portfolio. And so what's often contained in those plans are identification of what pri- what are our priorities or what should our priorities be? As well as identification of specific barriers that make the most sense for S V C E or S V C and our member agencies to address. And so to give some more kind of details on that, if you go to the next slide, what?
Go on, we do have a question. I don't know if it was on the last slide or the one before from Director Mekachuk.
Hi. My question is on electrification and transportation. So how does it work if you're moving your electrification from carbon to noncarbon, but at the same time someone gets an electric car. So it it kind of is in electrification and in transportation. Can you touch on that briefly? And if the numbers are so small that it gets lost in the rounding, then I get that, but you could explain.
See, so to clarify, is the, would you mind, I apologize, would you mind Director Mekachuk repeating your question one more time?
Sure. So if you go back a couple of slides, please, you'll see the one more that one, you see the the top is transportation and then the bottom is electricity. So if you've got an electric vehicle, previously you would be at the top, the transportation. But as you get an electric vehicle and it uses clean electricity, then how does that fit in?
Yes, got it. Got it. All right. Thanks for clarifying that. So you're right that the emissions resulting from transportation here, this is predominantly internal combustion engine emissions from passenger vehicles. There's also off road transportation included in here fleets, et cetera. But it's all from, you know, diesel internal combustion engines. And one of the primary strategies, you know, as you're alluding to, to decarbonize transportation is to electrify it. And so then you're exactly right that once you've electrified someone's transportation, the emissions resulting from that will start, you know, it'll start showing up, so to speak, under electricity. So S V C E at present offers a near or almost zero carbon electricity portfolio. And so effectively it is a very viable pathway to eliminating transportation emissions. And the electricity supply portfolio just across the state is just getting cleaner and cleaner and cleaner. The state has set very aggressive targets for renewable energy adoption and even carbon neutral targets across the state for 2045, which is shown here as as the red dot. And so the electricity supply portfolio is going very steeply towards carbon neutral. And so it's a, it is a strategy to decarbonize. And so hopefully that hopefully that addresses your question, but let me know if there are any follow ups there.
Looks like we're good. So let's keep going.
All right. So this is under the question of how does S V C decide which programs to pursue? I believe that's a question we're on here. And so in addition to stakeholder engagement or really kind of in combination with stakeholder engagement, we've developed a variety of different plans. And the cornerstone plan, which really forms our blueprint for how we pursue our entire programs portfolio is is this plan shown here on the right, the decarbonization strategy and programs roadmap, which was adopted by the board in December of 2018. And so in this particular plan, there were emissions reductions targets that were set through 2030 as well as the identification of a variety of different strategies and actions to achieve those targets, including a proposed kind of first tranche of programs that S V C would pursue. And so this this programs roadmap kind of encapsulates all parts of this Venn diagram in the way that it's developed. Next slide, please. But we also have several board approved sector specific plans. And so on the subject of, you know, transportation, for instance, we have a dedicated electric vehicle infrastructure joint action plan that was adopted in 2019 and really does a deep dive on that contribution to emissions and identifies the strategies and priorities and associated barriers with with tackling emissions from that sector. And this lays out the core programs that we have since deployed that focus on mobility. But on the very top row, for the power supply, we have an integrated resource plan. And so that is a a plan that's adopted on a biennial basis. So the first one at S V C E was adopted back in 2018. And we just had a second one adopted last year and we're already starting to think about the next one. So that's a power supply specific plan that we have. We have the E V infrastructure joint action plan that was mentioned. And then we also more most recently adopted the building decarbonization joint action plan back in November of last year. And so there are these board approved sector specific plans in addition to the kind of overarching decarb strategy and programs roadmap. Next slide, please. Yeah. And one more thing to mention on how we evaluate different program opportunities is is this slide here. And so in the decarb roadmap, this is a major component of that, which is specifically the framework that we're using to guide program selection and our approach. And so on the very first row, these are the types of programs that we focus on. Some of them are retail products and services like rebates, like customized power offerings that Don described. We also have more education and outreach focused programs, including, for instance, like the E hub tool or community engagement grants. We have some programs that are focused very heavily on public policy and those are very much in tight collaboration with our member agencies. So the reach code effort is a great example of that. And there were a couple of other programs that fall in this category that were recently adopted in the building decarb joint action plan. And we also have some programs that kind of fall under this market transformation category, building up an ecosystem to really advance decarbonization. And so our innovation programs kind of fit under this category, for instance, and workforce development. It's very focused under here. And so we divine program quite broadly, and it can be in any one of these different categories like the flavor of program. And then we also use the middle bar, the orange icons there to evaluate and compare different program opportunities. And so these are kind of the identified priorities that we use to measure and filter program opportunities, like is a program providing value to our customers and to our community? Is it contributing to our decarb mission? We also focus on solutions or opportunities that we believe will be scalable and transferable. So the impact that we have can be felt beyond our borders and that other C C As or other cities in other parts of the state or the nation can can benefit from what we've learned and helped develop. Equity is another priority as well as the last one here, core role for S V C E. This, you know, this one is trying to capture, is it really leveraging our expertise in the energy sector, for instance, or the relationship that we have with our cities? And so there's kind of, it's a fit. A fit related one. And then we also prioritize innovation database, data driven decision making as well as partnerships. We have a ton of different partnerships for most, if not all of our programs. All right, we can go to the next slide. Okay, just two more questions. And so for a question for what programs are currently available. You can flip to the next slide, Andrea. So we have six program focus areas, if it's helpful to try to kind of compartmentalize. So we have six program-focused areas, if it's helpful to try to kind of compartmentalize them. And so we have some programs that fall under power supply, the built environment, mobility and energy efficiency and grid integration. And so those are the the different parts of the Venn diagram, the green Venn diagrams, the sector-specific programs. And we also have a couple cross-sector program-focused areas, specifically education and outreach, as well as innovation. Next slide. And the active programs are currently listed on the slide. There are 14, so it's a lot. And it's too much to go over in this, you know, orientation meeting, but I look forward to, you know, diving in deeper in our future conversations about our programs portfolio. I did include a link there at the bottom, if you would like to just kind of browse the website to to learn more about some of these programs. I would mention that these are specifically only the active ones. There are several additional programs that have either been completed and kind of closed out or approved and not yet launched. And so I didn't capture those in this slide, so there's even more. Next slide, please. And in addition to the active programs, we have an innovation program called Innovation On Ramp, where we launch pilot projects to test ideas that really attempt to address technical, economic and market barriers to achieving deep decarbonization. And so we have nine active innovation pilots that have been launched through that program. And if you'd like more information about those pilots, the link at the bottom there can tell you more about those. Okay, next slide. All right. So the last question, where do I go to get more information? So this is a reference slide, really. If you wouldn't mind flipping to the next one, Andrea. Great. So we do carry out regular reporting and communications. The board specifically, we provide monthly updates on the programs portfolio to the board. That's included in the CEO report. We also do a quarterly update to the board, and that's provided as an informational item that's included on consent in the board packet. The next one will be shared in April that will cover Q1 of this year. The two primary websites for programs and pilots are listed there if you wanted to kind of take a look around. And we also, you know, carry out a variety of different press releases, blog posts, email communications, et cetera, about about any kind of major program developments. So those are generally when you'll, where you can look to find more information about programs. And of course, always feel free to contact S V C E or contact me. It's my email address and number at the bottom. All right.
Well, thank you for that. So are there any questions from the directors on this presentation? Not seeing any hands go up, so I guess you've answered our questions very well. I certainly had no idea there were so many programs we had active right now and really look forward to learning more about them in the future. So look forward to the next update on that. All right. Well, thank you very much. And let's move on to our third presentation.
Okay, good afternoon, everyone. I'm Red Singh here, CFO and Director of Administrative Administrative Services. I will go over finance and administration. I'll begin by introducing our team. So next slide, Andrea. So we have a small but mighty team. We have, as you know, Andrea Pazzano very well, our board clerk, who manages all communications and activities related to the board. We have Kevin Armstrong, our administrative services manager, who handles overseas just about every function within finance. We have Lisa Lay, our administrative assistant. We have one vacancy, senior financial analyst that we were recruiting for right now. And I'll just put a plug in, if you know of any good financial analysts, please send them our way. And then we have Nick Sanato, management analyst. He, Nick maintains all our IT infrastructure, including running of these meetings from an IT perspective. And he's, over the years, has built our IT infrastructure and continues to do so. And we'll talk a little bit more about IT later in the the presentation. Next slide, Andrea. So in terms of our responsibilities, we have the core finance function, which is accounting, financial reporting, budgeting, investments, risk management and and purchasing. This is purchasing everything outside of energy. Energy is all handled by by the power power supply team, but all the other contract administration is handled within finance. Risk management is something I'm not going to talk about in this presentation because we covered it extensively in the first board orientation meeting, if you remember. But certainly, if there are any questions, I'll be happy to answer them in this meeting as well. We have our core function of human resources, which is recruiting and hiring, implementing benefits, compensation policies. We have other administrative functions. We talked about the board meeting, document control, contracts management, all third-party contracts outside of power supply and general office support. And as I mentioned, maintaining our IT infrastructure, making sure it's reliable. It serves the needs of the organization, making so we have cybersecurity threats well addressed and and handled. Next slide, Andrea. So as a as a support organization, we we touch on basically all parts of the business. But in terms of our strategic, some of the strategic goals of the organization out of the 1919 strategic goals, these are some of the ones that we directly affect. One is build and maintain a high-performing team, maintain an enjoyable and rewarding workplace. Our finance-related goals of committing to maintaining a strong financial position, empowering organization-wide financial decision-making through data and data governance and IT support to basically provide the technology infrastructure needed to run our business and ensuring that we have we we enable a data-driven decision-making across the organization. And this is an area we're going to be putting a lot more effort in going forward in the next couple of years as well, which I'll touch on briefly as well. Next slide, Andrea. So let's begin with finance. So at the last board meeting, we went through our budget, so I won't go into too much detail into the budget, but I'll give you highlights of our of our finance picture. Next slide, Andrea. So Don covered this quite well. You know, all our revenues obviously comes from our customers, and we have 90%, about 90% residential and 10% non-residential customers. And in terms of sales of energy, 65% is non-residential and 35% is residential. And when I show you in the next slide, you'll notice that the revenues follow this makeup as well. Andrea, next slide, please. So in terms of our cash flow, 65%, similar to sales of our revenues, comes from non-residential customers and 35% from residential customers. And on the right side, I show a breakup of our total expenses out of 260 million. You'll notice that power supply makes up slightly more than 90% of our costs. And we talked a lot about it, our power supply portfolio in the first meeting. So as you know, that this is a very volatile expense for us. It fluctuates due to demand and market price volatility. If prices can go, you saw in Texas, go from 40 to 9,000, California, they can go from 40, 32 to the cap of $1,000 a megawatt hour, which we experienced last August. While at the same time, a heat wave can drive our our energy usage. So it's a very volatile supply cost, and it makes our budgeting that much more complicated. In terms of other expenses, you notice that our overall overhead costs are very low. Our general administrative costs are about 0.6%. Our personnel cost is only about 2.4% of the total budget. Next slide, please. The good news is that we have a strong financial position as reflected in the reserves that we have built since the, since our launch in 2017. We have built a healthy financial reserves, and we went into this at the budget meeting and at the last board board meeting as well. We're projecting to end the year with $160 million in reserves, which is about 226 days of cash on hand. In other words, we've got 226 days of cash to fund operating expenses out of our reserves. If if as a metric, of course, we always have revenues flowing in. And reflecting our strong financial position is is the investment-grade credit ratings we received with two rating agencies. Last summer, we received an investment-grade rating agency from Moody's. And earlier this year, we got an A rating from S and P. And on our books, we have no debt. The initial debt that was that was funded by the member agencies was repaid. We do have 35 million line of additional credit from our bank, which is not reflected in the days of cash on hand. So that's additional liquidity that we that we hold to manage the volatile portfolio that I that I talked about earlier. Next slide, Andrea. So I'll touch on this briefly, and there'll be more information coming to the board members. And and we'll be talking about the structure at the next finance committee meeting next week is our power prepaid transaction that we're pursuing. So this is an innovative means in which we can, we can reduce our our power supply costs. And and this is a competitive advantage for us relative to PGNE, because PGNE directly cannot access this. And what I'm talking about here is we have the ability to arbitrage the difference between taxable and tax-exempt debt. So that differential between that, we can translate it into savings for power procurement. So normally, when we when we enter into the long-term renewable power purchases contracts that now are over $1 billion in our in our books, let's say we have a deal with Shell Energy for $30 a megawatt hour. Currently, we would pay as they deliver the energy, $30 a megawatt hour for each hour of energy that they deliver. What we can do is basically put that same contract through this prepaid structure, which is where we will direct it through an investment bank. And then it will flow back to us, but it will come back to us instead of, let's say, $30. We would have to pay, we would only have to pay like something like $27, you know. So we get, let's say, $3 a megawatt hour discount. The actual discount will obviously depend on the on the level of spread between the tax and tax exempt debt. And so it, so there's a lot of details in this structure, but I just want to paint a picture that we have a unique opportunity as a municipal agency to bring additional savings in our portfolio. And we're targeting savings of around 8 to 12%, which can translate to about 1.25 billion to 1.7 billion. The exact number will obviously depend on the market and market economics. The economics are not there right now, but the market is trending in the in the right direction because the interest rate spreads are not quite at a level where we would want to execute. But in the meantime, there's a lot of transactions and processes that have to be put in place, and we're working to put that in place. And one thing I want to emphasize is that in this structure, we will not issue any debt. We will set up, working with other three CCA's listed here, East Bay Community, 3CE, MCE. We're setting up a separate agency called the Municipal Bond Conduit. That will be the agency that will issue the bonds, and we will not, these are called non-recourse bonds. They're actually even non-recourse to the municipal entity as well. They're backed by the investment bank. So there will be no debt that will show up on on our balance sheet. It's basically very minimal risk for us, an opportunity for us to capture the spread and increase our competitive advantage. Next slide, Andrea. So now I'll focus a little bit on the administrative service services. Next slide. So at S V C E, first touch on on our HR side. We have a very high-performing, small, diverse, and I would say a highly leveraged staff. As you probably get a sense, we have a very complicated, complex business where we have to deal with a lot of various dimensions. And it's certified, only a staff of 32 people. And what makes it highly leveraged right now is is the fact that we also have eight vacancies that we're actively working to fill. I'm also pleased to say that we are a very diverse group, about 50% men, 50% women. 67% of our management team is a persons of color. And another metric that emphasizes how leveraged the staff is, is the revenue per FTE. It's about 8 million per FTE. So a lot of lot of load on on a small staff, but very highly productive team. Next slide, please. To support this highly productive team, you know, our goal is to make sure that we support the team. We provide a comprehensive time-off policy, a well-defined benefits plan with a lot of health plan choices. We have policies in place for supporting remote work. We offer a stipend to support work from home. And for long-term employee retirement contribution towards retirement plans, we offer the 401 plan as well as the 457 deferred compensation plan. Next slide, please. So I'll touch a little bit on our information technology platform. Next slide, Andrea. So this is a bit of a roadmap we have built over the years since the launch. Our IT infrastructure was first installed when we when we launched the business. We hired an in-house expert, Nick Sanato, who's on the call, making sure the meeting is running smoothly. We've effectively continue continuously add to that infrastructure to make sure it supports our business. And we put a lot of emphasis in in making sure that we are protected from cybersecurity threats, phishing attempts. We have almost, Nick tries to trick us into clicking on these phishing emails, and then we have to take training if we fail. So it keeps us on our toe. We also have cybersecurity insurance policy covers that we that we carry. And we, and to make sure that our platform is secure and robust, we perform an annual IT audit. There is actually two IT audits we go through. One is our cybersecurity annual audit, which we're actually in the process of launching starting next month and will conclude sometime in June. And and we will bring the results of that audit finding to our audit committee meeting in August. And whatever actions come out of that, we will work to remediate. But that will basically ensure that we have good practices in place. We we have a secure platform and not vulnerable to cybersecurity threats. We also have a AMI audit, Advanced Metering Infrastructure Audit. This is not related to the meters, they're owned by PGNE, but it's the data that that we have access to through that's collected from these meters, our customer data that Amy and and Don mentioned that work with and analyze and billing data and designing our programs. We, the CPUC audit, has to make sure that that data is secure and handled properly. And that is done on every three-year cycle, and the next one will be next year. And a big initiative for us, which I will touch on, is now we are upgrading. As as S V C is moving from a starter phase to a mature phase, there's a need for us to have enterprise-wide systems and bring our practices in line with any other sophisticated energy services provider. Next slide. So this is a busy slide, but I just want to paint a picture. This is a a agency-wide, not just within finance, but it's an agency-wide effort. We're calling it business process optimization. And in particular, I'm working closely with Amy and Monica, and but all the directors are involved. He, this is where we want to make sure that we move from, again, from a starter phase to a mature phase. Just to give you a size of some of the data we deal with. Just to give you a size of some of the data we deal with, uh on a customer side, customer usage data. There's about eight million rows of records of data that we collect daily. On our C N I customers, that's fifteen minute interval data. And on our, uh, you know, there's about twenty seven thousand C N I customers and about two hundred and forty, two hundred and forty three thousand rest customers. We collect hourly data that translates to about eight million records of data that we have to analyze, so Amy can offer the programs. And and give you the insights, uh gain the insights on customer to design effective programs. Data that we can use for billing, uh analysis purposes, rate analysis, revenue calculation. That we use for load forecasting, for example, so there's a lot of data just on the customer side. And then on the energy procurement side, and I'll touch on this in some of the uh latest slides. There's a lot of tran- counterparty transaction data, there's market data, we talked about California I S O. You know, how we, it's a big financial clearinghouse as well, how we settle with the California I S O. How we settle with each of the counterparties, how we track the the risks of our portfolio, so a lot of data. With a with a very small staff, so we want to make sure we use our staff effectively and efficiently so that the staff is using the data to provide insights. For making decisions and less time chasing data or be vulnerable to operational risks. Because of labor intensive processes or be susceptible to business continuity risks. Uh, you know, which. Which uh you can be susceptible to with spreadsheet driven processes, so we need to move more towards an enterprise. Platform where the data is auditable, integrated, automated, and we can have effective risk management, effective controls, effective. Uh, insights to offer customer programs and effective portfolio management. Next slide, please. So this is, this is sort of a future state of where we want to be. At the heart, at the bottom there is we will have a big central data repository. Uh, or we'll call it data warehouse. Uh, and that will access all our customer data that will be used for. Customer data analysis, load forecasting, financial management. And and revenue and rates calculations and in the top. Uh, uh, two boxes boxed in the green box there is our portfolio management functions. We're gonna be focusing a lot of attention uh on the power supply and how we manage the power supply. Of uh the power supply procurement portfolio. And I'll touch on that in the next slide. Andrea, next slide, please. So we touched on this a little bit at at the first orientation meeting when we talked about. Uh, when Monica went through the power supply portfolio and I talked about the risk management, there's a lot of. Data that we need to effectively manage a complicated power procurement portfolio. There's all the transactional data that we have with each of the counterparties, all that data needs to flow to the California I S O in an effective and efficient manner. It needs to go into how we settle and scheduling and settle the data, and there's market data and and market data is. For example, not just historical data, but. Data that's traded in the market, we talked a little bit about how electricity can be. Comparable to a a financial portfolio like stocks being traded. You know, so anytime you have a forward position, the we have a on a daily. And even instantaneous basis, market prices. Uh, available and we need to harness that mark those market prices so that we can evaluate when evaluating a transaction. To transact with a particular counterparty, we need to look at the economics of that deal. And so we need access to that data, we need access to sophisticated tools on the right side, the portfolio management tools to be able to analyze that data. You know, we talked about how things that may seem simple like a storage, uh energy storage, battery storage. You know, financial terms can be a spread option, so we need to be able to analyze the economics of that deal so we can compare one deal to the other. And that means accessing the market data for market prices, marketing play volatility, correlations data, we talked a little bit about. On the credit side, the counterparties that we deal with, we need to know how financial, financial uh their financial healths are. So that they are able to honor the commitments they enter into with us. And that that's a lot of data that and then how do we basically manage, we talked a little bit about credit risk. Management and collateral posting, how it can affect our liquidity, cash management positions. And and a lot of those computations require complex analytics and access to data. And these are some of the things we're doing right now with third parties, uh but not in an integrated and efficient manner, so we want to pull. A system and processes in place, and this is commonly known in the industry as energy trading and risk management software. So we will be working towards building this in the couple, uh in the next couple of years, so we are a big focus. So those were some of the highlights I wanted to make on the on the business process side. I think that concludes the presentation, yeah, thank you. So if there are any questions, I'll be happy to answer them.
Okay, thank you very much, directors, if you have questions, please raise your hands. Um, I'm not seeing any go up yet, so I'll 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 start with one or two. Um, on the the enterprise wide systems that we're looking at as. We're doing this as we come up the maturity curve, and I'm sure there are many other C C As in California who are also coming up. The curve at the same time, are we, are there opportunities for sharing that best practices? Or perhaps procuring software together so that we're not reinventing the wheel?
Yes, so uh those are very good points and observations, so we are always in touch with our counterparts. Uh, and in fact, I just got an email it while in this meeting from a risk manager in Sonoma. About what tools and processes we're putting in place, so we're learning from each other. Uh, and we're uh learning from each other's experiences. But we also wanna want to, everyone is set up slightly differently as well with the. The tools and systems and processes and the people they have in house. So and and the nature of this business is is very dynamic, well, some of this can be leveraged, some of this has to be customizable. So what we will be doing is first architecting a a big, a a comprehensive strategy of how we want to pursue this. You know, how much of this we want, third party solutions, how much of this we want it customizable, so that it speaks to our portfolio. So those are the things we will be looking at before we embark on any kind of a. Um, either buying strategy or build strategy. And in fact, we will be, I mean, the process of bringing a consultant with experience in this area as well to help us with this effort.
Yeah, okay, good, I I'm glad that you're looking at that, I just know. Sort of in my own experience, whether it's in the private industry or with my own city, sometimes it's easy to to start with customized software because you have unique needs. But then as you go farther down that path and get locked in there, it becomes much harder to transition to whatever the new industry norm is. Um, and that can create problems, you know, ten years down the road or so, so.
Very well said, uh, and I have. About twenty so years of experience in this area, and that's why I want to approach a strategy that's nimble. Because from my experience, when you look for third party software solutions in this area. Listen, they will give you the software for almost nothing, because they make their money from implementation and customization. And with the nature of our businesses, the transactions will always come with tweaks. You know, uh, something that you didn't anticipate. And when you have to go back to the vendor, that's how they make their money, this is why we want something that is the right size for us, nimble enough. And can change with our changing business, which is very dynamic. Uh, so we are very cognizant of that point, and that's why we don't wanna. We don't want to take a technology solution and not fit our business to it. We're starting from what is an optimal business process for us and how can we leverage software? To make us more effective, uh as opposed to fitting into a predefined solution.
Good, that's good to hear. Um, also, I appreciated seeing the slide um on our expenses showing that I think ninety one percent of our expenses are power costs. And one of my takeaways from that is that that other nine percent, uh, which is the stuff that we really control, control directly is really a. Very small amount. And so if the power costs go crazy, we have a very limited ability. To cut back our own operations without absolutely decimating our programs or our overhead and so. Um, it's why the, you know, paying attention to the power costs and hedging and all that is just absolutely critical to our.
Very good observation, yes.
Yeah, cool. Um, any other director comments or questions? Wow, I'm not seeing any on this either. Um, you guys have done a great job of. Enlightening us and answering our questions, I'm sure down the road, we will have more questions, but we can always follow up with Grish at that point. Um, Grish, would you like to make any further comments on this?
Um, first of all, thank you all board for uh being present and asking the questions. Frankly, in my experience in doing these kinds of orientation sessions, this is. My own experience, this is one of the better ones in the sense, just getting this questions and the dialogue really. Gives us a sense of where you are and I just loved it. Um, I think each of the directors have also left you with, here are things that are coming up. Right, and Gustaf, I think your last point was probably in my opinion, just so key. Which is. Since power supply is such a big piece of our portfolio. Small changes. May require us to revisit. Our policy decisions, right, we don't have much room, and so these are things that Amrit is going to be teeing up. For the executive committee and the board uh over the next several months, because there's some trade offs that you're gonna have to look at. Uh, in terms of our portfolio, how much of it is going to be carbon free, how much is going to be renewable? And how much of a discount you want to offer? So it's it's almost like the kinds of discussions that we had in twenty sixteen and twenty seventeen when we're forming the agency. Uh, because of the increase in the P C I, we're gonna have those discussions again, so it's really good to have. This kind of tea up, uh such that all of you are familiar with it, so with that, I I that's the end of my comments. I'm going to ask maybe, sorry, I'll say, if there are any questions that you have, you you all have the presentations. If you have specific questions you would like to get additional information on, please send me an email or Andrea an email and we'll do that, we'll answer you. Uh, or a one on one meeting on a particular topic, there may be one or two slides that you really have interest in. And you want to get into depth on that, please send us an email and we'll set up a meeting with you to go over that, so that's an invite. And uh I also want to note that uh city council member and our board member from Morgan Hill. Yvonne Beltran Martinez has joined us, she's been with us for about uh half the meeting, so.
Okay, thank you. So um I will open it up for public comment now, if any member of the public would like to make a comment on these presentations. Please either raise your virtual hand or dial star nine on your telephone. And I'm not seeing any hands go up, so I will close the public comment. Um, bring it back to the next item on our agenda, which is board member announcements and direction for future agenda items. Um, not expecting anything, but uh raise your hand if you do have something, and I don't see that either. So with that, we will adjourn this special meeting. Thank you very much to all the board members and to staff, it's been a wonderful workshop, so thank you.